Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasas.com/ctvlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening and welcome to the June 8th, 2022 special city council meeting. Tonight I am joined by Mayor Protem Shapiro, council members Bizajin, Kraut, and Weintraub, as well as our staff. The pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by one of our own staff, Michael McCollum. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we move on to approve the agenda, there are a couple changes. Captain Sito will not be able to join us tonight. She'll be joining us at another meeting. And item number seven on consent is being polled and will be scheduled also for another meeting. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Bizajin.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Yes.
And Mayor Maurer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, our first presentation of this evening is the sheriff's crime report for April 2022. And presenting is Deputy De Mateo.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you for having me. Yeah, I am Deputy De Mateo of the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, and I'm going to present the crime report for the month of April. Um, and the common theme for April is going to be theft, specifically mail theft. So before I get started, I just wanted to remind the community watching or listening that if it's feasible to install a locking mailbox and also to sign up for the informed delivery via USPS, they will send you a digital preview of your incoming mail before it is delivered, and you can start the process at informeddelivery.usps.com. Okay, now let's get into it. We did have one allegation of rape. This incident involved an engaged couple that lived together. This investigation is being handled by the Sheriff's Special Victims Bureau, and no further information is available at this time. There was one assault. This was more of a family disturbance where an argument ensued between family members and one individual was assaulted. And that person doing the assaulting was arrested. We did have two burglaries to a business. And let's see, one was to a restaurant on Lost Virginus Road, and then we also had one to a pharmacy on Lost Virginus Road. Zero residential burglaries to announce for the month of April, which is very good. We did have six burglaries to locked vehicles. I checked where those occurred, and we had three on the Lost Virginus area, and then the other three were in the park streets. We did have six grand theft incidents, four petty theft incidents, and two thefts from unlocked vehicles. There were four stolen cars in the month of April. We had an early or a newer model BMW sedan, an older model white Ford utility van, a 2021 Honda Accord, and an older model Kia Rio. These four vehicles were stolen from various parts of the city, so no two were in the same spot. Uh, we did have a total of 26 Part 1 crimes with an increase of 19%. That's it for the crime report for April. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Let me ask our city clerk first. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands up. However, I see Councilmember Bizajin standing.
Right, I will go to my colleagues, um, and Councilmember Bizajin.
Yes, Deputy De Mateo, I'm not sure if you're going to be aware of some of these things. So if you're not, just let me know, and I'll wait for someone else to answer it. I learned today that a lot of the contract cities, some of them are using direct contract services with their local station. For example, the West Hollywood Station has a direct contract for mental evaluation services with its West Hollywood Station. Is that an option that the Lost Hills Station offers? And is that something that's set up to go that we can look at that or not?
Yeah, so I know very little about that subject. Contract, contract law would be better suited for a lieutenant that represents Calabasas. So I will bring this to their attention, and we will have an answer for you.
Okay, and if they could just provide us with some options, just we may, not to say we're committing to anything, but we just want to see what we might be able to contract for. I know we had mentioned a lot of things that we'd like maybe to specialize in, including mental evaluation team services that might not otherwise be readily available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the council members? All right, I, I'll just say that I have signed up with for informed delivery and been receiving notices for years, and it's really helpful to know when a piece of important mail is coming, so I strongly recommend that. Thank you for that very much. And thank you for your service, Deputy De Mateo.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, moving on to council announcements. Council members, do you have any announcements? And I see Councilmember Bizajin again.
A couple of things. We had our grand reopening of the senior center that was very popular and successful when we hosted America in Bloom. Both were last week. Uh, we had an election yesterday. Congratulations to those who have won. And we still have quite a few ballots to process, so we're not really sure in some of the races who has won. I did want to mention, Madam Mayor, one thing that was disappointing about yesterday's election was the very, very low turnout. I'm not sure what the final numbers are going to be, but if they don't get too much higher, then we will have got, had the lowest turnout since 1914 in the statewide election. And that's when they first started keeping statistics, and there's a little asterisk that they're not even sure that number's accurate. So it was incredibly low turnout, like 20% or something around there. And it's, it's just a shame that after some nice, healthy turnouts in the last couple of years, that so few people with all the options you have were able to vote or took the time to vote. And just perhaps we can help contribute in the future as a city to maybe getting, turning out the vote a little higher here. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share with the public that we had our fundraiser for our local school district last Saturday night at the Save Rush Cantina. It was called Rock the District. Saw several members of the city council and our local community out there support, and I wanted to say thank you for that. And I also wanted to mention that I had the privilege of attending the culmination at AE Wright earlier this evening and presenting the mayor's award to Reece DeSante for her excellent contributions to the school in form of so many things, so many volunteer projects and such that she has taken on, and just want to raise her name one more time and say congratulations.
Councilmember Weintraub?
I just wanted to congratulate all of our local graduates. It's so exciting for everyone and so amazing to have all of these in-person graduations after a hiatus from normal graduation. So congratulations to everyone and all of the families. We're so excited to see what all of our graduates do. And also, the Fourth of July tickets are on sale, and you can purchase them on our city website. So thank you so much.
Okay, and Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone, our very first concert at the lake is this Sunday, beginning at 6 o'clock with the Journey Tribute Band. So get there early and get a spot. It will be warm but beautiful, and should be a great, great evening for everyone. And also, I attended, had the pleasure to attend the very last performance of Calabasas High School Music and Choir. And it happened to be the former director there, Josh Barrow's last performance at Calabasas. I want to thank him and wish him well. And he's going to be continuing teaching students at Bay Laurel. So hopefully some new generations of musical talent and vocal talent. And also wanted to, well, I'm sure you'll talk about the other event we attended, but congratulations to everyone graduating as well.
All right, thank you. And I'll just add, I had the privilege of attending AC Still's graduation this evening and presenting the mayor's award to Hayley Middleman, and an extraordinary student who has done so much for this school. So congratulations also to all graduates. Okay, we're going to move on to oral communication and public comment. Mari, are there any members of the public wishing to speak during general public comment? This, and so the public knows, this is the time that you may speak on items that are not on the agenda. If you wanted to speak on an item that's coming up, you'll wait and raise your hand at that time. So Mari, is there anyone for general public comment?
Madam Mayor, no hands are up, so no public comments.
Okay, wonderful. So we're going to move on to consent items. As I mentioned, item seven has been polled and will be rescheduled. So we have items one through six. Does anyone wish to call any of these items?
Two, please.
Four, please.
Any others? Okay, so we have, may I have a motion for items one, three, five, and six?
I'll make the motion to approve those items.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilmember Bizajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we're going to go to item number two. Councilmember Bizajin?
Uh, question, have we made a definitive determination as to when we're meeting back in person? I remember it being discussed August, but I'm not sure we ever finalized that. Kendon?
That's correct, Councilmember. The latest direction that we have from the council is to return August 10th, but that is also contingent on what we see with the numbers going into summer with COVID cases. And so as we watch that through July, we'll report back to the council and then determine at that point and notice, notify the public accordingly.
So if there's, if it's not on the agenda for our next meeting in June, then we can assume it's in person in August unless what?
I guess, Councilmember, if we see again a huge uptick in the cases, and it's the council's preference to do that, and I guess, Mayor, that would be something you and I would consult with on.
Okay, well, let's, I see the city attorney on the screen, but if we can, um...
I am here.
Oh, sorry. Okay, let me switch my view. Um, Matt, make sure that, you know, because we're going to be gone in July. So I don't know what the legality is if we've given direction, and then it's just, is it a staff decision or what kind of thing is it?
As noted, it would be a mayor's decision. If the council wants to cabin the mayor's discretion, then the council could provide definitive direction to return August 10th in person. As the city manager noted, it might be better to bake in that flexibility if cases spike. The other option would be to narrow the discretion by saying if cases rise above a certain amount or a certain metric, then the August 10th meeting will not be in person. Otherwise, it'll be in person. But in present, the direction is in person unless otherwise determined by the mayor.
I'm, I'm okay with that discretion being given. I just, let's make sure the public is told if there's going to be any change though.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, um, is there a motion to approve consent item two?
I would move that.
In a second?
Aye. I'll second that. Sorry, I'll second that. Vote for it.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Bizajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes. All right, we're on to consent item number four. Councilmember Kraut?
Yes, thank you. We discussed item number four at the May 25th meeting. And at that time, I did raise the issue that we have two items that were discussed. One is agendizing this item every two years so that reviewing city council member salaries becomes a procedure and not what could become a political item. I was strongly in favor of that. The second item that's rolled into this was moving forward with a salary increase for council members. I am not in favor of that. And I want to point out that we, at the May 25th meeting, what was passed was the maximum increase we can give to council members retroactively, or not retroactively, but picking up previous increases that weren't made in previous years. Uh, and I just want to voice my opinion and ask Madam Mayor if these could be held as two separate questions. One question is in favor of proceduralizing it, and the second question is in favor of the raise.
I'm going to turn to the city attorney. Matt, I'm...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask for your opinion.
My understanding is the council already provided in the last meeting the direction to set it as a staff to do every two years to return, to revisit council salaries. And so that item has been approved. Now, the second item is the second reading of the ordinance that would impose a current increase, which is up to the council's discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I also was going to ask for this item to be pulled. As I stated when this item came up, not until, we've had thorough discussions about our own staff who we've recognized are underpaid in, when comparing to the other local cities and cities of our size and have gone several occasions without any colas during critical times. It's just doesn't, it seems self-serving at this time. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Bizajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut?
No.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
No.
Carries three, too.
All righty, we are now moving from consent items to item number eight. This is a public hearing for consideration of the following matter. Ordinance number 22, 2022-398, to add section 17.82, or the urban lot splits, and 17.84, or the ministerial design review permits, to title 17, Land Use and Development of the Calabasas Municipal Code as necessary to comply with California law, and that's Senate Bill 9 and Senate Bill 10. Madam Clerk, has the proof of posting and publication been filed for this public hearing?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We received correspondence and correspondence, and it was distributed and posted.
Okay, so this public hearing is open. Are there any changes or additions to the staff report? We have Michael Klein and Matt Summers presenting.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. There are no changes to the staff report or the ordinance. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation. If you would like me to jump into that right now, I can.
Always like to make sure the public is informed. That's great. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully everyone can see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so as, as was described, this is a request to adopt an ordinance 2022-398 in response to SB 9 and SB 10. Just to give a quick background, back in September 16th of 2021, the governor signed into effect SB 9 and SB 10, and both of those laws went into effect January 1st of 2022 this year. There are effectively three different components to SB 9 and SB 10. Under SB 9, there's something that we've identified, or we call the urban lot split, and that effectively requires local jurisdictions ministerially approved, splitting any single parcel into two single-family residential zones. Ministerial means there's no discretion on behalf of the city, and the, we cannot hold any sort of public hearing for that type of permit. So any single-family zone property in the city under SB 9, as it stands right now, could be split despite the fact that our current ordinance usually would limit a lot of those lot splits because of the minimum lot size. However, SB 9 overrules our local requirements. Then SB 9 also includes a ministerial design review process, which also requires local jurisdictions ministerially approved up to two new residential units, meeting certain standards within any single-family residential zone. And just by way of background, our current municipal code requires any new single-family home to go through a site plan review process, which requires planning commission review. So similar to the lot, urban lot splits, under SB 9, the city cannot have any sort of discretionary review on up to two new residential, single-family units, and cannot hold any sort of public hearing for those types of projects. It's important to note that SB 9 does allow the local jurisdiction to adopt objective zoning standards, and those objective zoning standards do have to fall into some certain criteria requirements with the state law. But the main reason why we are here tonight is because the fact that we are allowed to adopt objective zoning standards. The goal of the proposed ordinance is to implement those zoning standards that staff believes would provide for at least more orderly development under SB 9. Without this ordinance, we wouldn't have those standards that we comply. We would have to just approve single-family residential units in any, in any single-family zone without a public hearing process and without, without subjects to the standards that we're proposing within this ordinance. Then there's SB 10, which is called, or also known as the Light Density Act, and that allows, but does not require the city to upzone certain areas of infill site within transit-rich areas to allow for up to 10 residential units per lot and also bypass info. So again, the important thing to note here, the SB 9 and SB 10 are already in effect. If an application was submitted tomorrow, and the property owner is requesting a lot split or up to two single-family homes under the SB 9 provisions of the state law, we would be obligated to process that permit in accordance with state law. So on April 27, the city council discussed this, the SB 9, SB 10 ordinance. Staff provided the council with a draft version. Because of the fact that this law went into effect in January, staff believe that there's an urgency to this particular ordinance. So that's why we brought the council a draft ordinance before we went to the planning commission. And at the conclusion of that meeting or of that discussion, the council directed staff to proceed forward with the public hearing process, and the public hearing process starts with the planning commission. On May 19, we held a public hearing with the planning commission, and the planning commission discussed ordinance 2022-398. And at that meeting, the planning commission adopted resolution number 2022-742, recommending approval of the ordinance. At that meeting, the planning commission did not recommend any changes to the text of the ordinance. So the ordinance that's in front of the council tonight remain, is the same that was in front of the planning commission on May 19. However, the planning commission did direct staff to modify one of the findings within the ordinance, basically stipulating that the city may adopt an ordinance under state law, even though it's overriding conflicting local laws. So just to quickly go over what the proposed ordinance is in front of the council, the staff is proposing to add two new sections. The first section relates to urban lot splits, and this, the proposed ordinance would add section 17.82 to the Calabasas Municipal Code. It would effectively identify the allowed lot size under SB 9, which is listed here, basically requiring that any new lot split under SB 9 would be at least 1,200 square feet, and the new parcel may not be, may not be less than 40% of the lot area of the original parcel. So if you add a 10,000 square foot lot, the two resulting lots would be, have to be somewhere around 5,000, 5,000 to 4,000 square feet. This also establishes that the maximum density for any lot that is split under SB 9 would, would permit a total of four new units, two on the original lot, and then two on the new lot. Now, just for reference, under current law, you can have three residential units on one existing single-family lot. So under the current regulations, you can have a single-family home on your lot, so you have a 5,000 square foot lot. You can have a single-family home in attached or detached accessory dwelling unit, and also a junior dwelling unit, all on the same lot. Some interpretations of SB 9 would potentially allow up to six units. However, the way that we have crafted this proposed ordinance would limit any, any SB 9 lot split to a total of four units, again, two on each new lot. It would also limit any future lot splits. So our ordinance would establish that if a lot is already split under SB 9, neither of those two lots could be split at any time in the future. One of the critical components to the proposed ordinance is the fact that for any SB 9 lot split, any new residential unit proposed on either lot would be limited to a total of 800 square feet. Again, this is a crucial component to the proposed ordinance to provide it an objective standard that controls development, orderly development within SB 9. Without this ordinance, under state law, if someone were to split their lot under SB 9, there, there is theoretically no limit on the size of either of any of the new units. So without this ordinance, you could have, in theory, 2,000 or 3,000 square foot homes, two, two 2,000 square foot homes or two 3,000 square foot homes on each resulting lot. But under the proposed ordinance, if a, if a property owner splits their lot under SB 9, any new structure on either lot would be limited 800 square feet. They could still have the same sized house, obviously, if they have an existing house. That house could remain, but a new structure would be limited 800 square feet. Design standards would also be required to comply with underlying zoning requirements. And again, that's something that we're able to add because of the ordinance. That's not just something that's standard under the state law. And we are using what we identify as a fire safety standard to require a 10-foot separation between detached structures. The state law has no stipulation on that, on that requirement. So this ordinance would add that in there. And finally, our ordinance would require the applicant or original property owner to remain a resident in one of the units for at least three years after the lot split. The next section that staff is proposing within the ordinance is section 17.84. This would be to, to address the ministerial review process for up to two new single-family homes for both actually SB 9 and section 17.84 for ministerial review. All of these rules would be limited to strictly the residential zoning districts, such as residential single-family, residential rural, and residential community. Uh, there are other areas in the city that have, that single-family is a permitted use, but someone would not be able to take advantage of SB 9 within this ordinance. However, arguably, without the ordinance under state law, they, they would be able to use SB 9 standards in some of the other zoning districts, such as hillsite, mountainous, and open space zones. But under this, this would limit it to just the... But under this, this would limit it to just the residential zoning districts. And under the ministry review process, if someone wanted to take advantage of that. Like I said, that would that would allow them to be permitted a new single family dwelling unit without any discretionary review by the city. Or a public hearing process. This ordinance would create objective standards and one of the crucial standards there too is that. It would be limited, any new residential unit would be limited to eight hundred square feet maximum for each individual unit. It also establishes that the allowed density is two units per parcel. And, uh, consistent with the requirements under SB nine, parking will be limited to one space per unit. Setbacks are also consistent with what is allowed under SB nine. And the state law, uh, however, we would also prohibit rooftop decks and require utilities to be undergrounded. Again, the the main theme here is that by creating these objective standards, we're able to provide better. You know, more orderly development under SB nine. Without this proposed ordinance, we would be required under SB nine to ministerially approve. Any site home, so, uh, in the Calabasas Highlands, for example, we have. Three or four pending applications right now for homes ranging in size from eighteen hundred square feet to twenty five hundred square feet. Those permits require the property owner to go through. Uh, biological review, story poll installation and planning commission. Technically, under state law and SB nine, they would be exempt from those from those, uh, requirements. And we would have to permit them ministerially. With this ordinance. They would not, those projects would not meet these criteria because all of those homes are over eight hundred square feet. So it doesn't limit new development to eight hundred square feet. It just means that if someone wants to take advantage of the ministerial review process, the the maximum size unit is eight hundred square feet. And then finally, to address the light touch density act, uh, the ordinance expressly declines the authority granted under SB ten. And also the ordinance has an automatic repeal section of both seventeen point eight two and seventeen point eight four. If the statutes created by SB nine are ever repealed or ruled unconstitutional by. Either the California state legislature or any other court, so, uh. And again, I just want to reiterate, all of this is already in effect and the purpose of this ordinance. Is to now create objective design standards so that we can better implement the requirements under SB nine. And with that, staff requests that the council wait further reading and introduce ordinance number two zero two two dash three nine eight. Adding section should say seventeen point eight two and also seventeen point eight four to the municipal code. With that, I'm available for questions and of course, the, uh, city attorney Matt Summers is also present.
Alright, um, Mari, are there, well, actually my colleagues, are there any questions for Michael?
And.
Um, did you, I have kind of questions and comments mingled in, can I just ask the questions then?
Yes. Yeah.
Were there any, um? Okay. Um, uh, let me start with Matt, um. The provision about residing at the residence for three years. I remember SB nine required that you state that you're going to reside at the residence. For for three years. Is it okay for us, is it legal for us to say you shall reside? I mean, it's not directly conflicting with the state law, but. It is touching upon a point that the legislature is kind of already indicated.
Uh, my advice is that it's fine to make it as the ordinance states, the applicant shall occupy. One of the units for at least three years, so a little bit beyond what the legislature did, but not too far as to be indefensible.
So what happens if the legis, what happens if the person says under SB nine, I intend to live there for three years? Then builds it and then doesn't and then doesn't live there. Now we've got the structure there, does the city knock it down?
We wouldn't need a court order to knock it down, I doubt we'd ever get that. What we would do would be go through the code enforcement process and likely pursue an injunction. Requiring the owner to move back and live there or lose the C of O and lose the ability to rent it. It would prevent, in particular, the goal would be to get an injunction blocking a rental.
Okay, so that's the remedy.
Almost never get an order to knock a building down.
Okay, um. Uh, I guess also to Matthew, uh, was were any other provisions considered and rejected? We've gotten a few letters about, uh, or one letter in particular about some fire, uh, safety issues. Um, was there any stronger language that was considered and rejected for for legal reasons that that you felt it could were not tenable?
So we took a look at what some other cities have done and. The main one that we considered but did not include in the draft is requiring. That one or more of the units created through SB nine be affordable. The reason for that is that I don't see a good basis in law to do it. I recognize some cities have done it and I wish them well in defending that. It's an up, it's a very uphill battle to do that. Uh, so we did not include that, nor do we include the kind of. Uh, creative environmental regulations that cities, um, like the one in the Bay area that we see a lot of press coverage that declared the entire city mountain line habitat. And then we drew that two days later after the AG struck it, uh, moved to strike it down. We didn't include those, um, on. Fire and infrastructure standards, I did review the letter referring to, which is in the council packet. And there, we're looking at that is not a blanket standard. To be imposed upfront and knock out certain areas of the city, but rather to rely on the existing denial finding. That allows a city to deny a project if we can show based on evidence. That there would be a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety or the physical environment in any given particular case. Our recommendation is to look at that as the tool to use for sites that are just not right for this, rather than setting it as a blanket rule.
Okay, and that's already, as I recall, written directly into SB nine.
Correct, that finding is cut and paste from SB nine and baked into both both of the two added chapters.
Is is there any way to include in the ordinance some align? Uh, strengthening that SB nine language or supporting it? Because I know that the council can't actually make that determination, it's in a staff determination. So is there anything in the ordinance that we could add to bolster that finding of staff making it more compelling?
Uh, not sure that anything comes to mind right now, district, and I think we've got the, it's more about the evidence in any given case to show. That we can credibly claim that there will be a specific adverse impact upon a public health or safety or the physical environment. But staff can certainly bear in mind the direction from council to be robust as those arise.
Okay, and my final question involves the underground utilities, um. Is that, is it, is there any language in that that would be conflicting with other aspects of the municipal code? Such that someone could say that we are imposing greater conditions on SB nine related, um. You know, developments as opposed to other developments and there's some kind of. I guess equal protection argument or prejudicial argument that we're trying to thwart the state legislature on that.
I mean, I can answer that question, our municipal code already already requires all new development underground utilities, so. This is just a belt and suspender and reaffirming that requirement.
But that, but that, but that includes if you're going to modify, uh, uh, of an existing residential property like that?
No, only new structures are required to have underground utilities.
So we're applying the same rule for new SB nine structures as we would for other new houses.
Okay, that that makes sense, okay, thank you for that clarification, thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Crowe?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I put my hand down, uh, council member Buzagian asked my question.
Okay, great, anyone, any other council members with question before I go to the public? Councilmember Waintron?
You know what, actually, if I, if I can hold my questions till after the public.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any questions from the public?
We do have Michael Harrison, Madam Mayor.
We'll bring him in and allow him to speak. If if there's anyone else, could you bring them in?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Maura, this is Michael Harrison, Calabasas. I didn't have questions, I had comments, so do you want them later?
That's fine.
Or do you want them now?
You can have, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I just wanted to let you know some of the concerns of all the planning commissioners. And and they're basically aside from this ordinance. We wanted you to consider a moratorium on all new development in the city during this current water emergency. And if you can't do that, consider a moratorium on all new landscaping and pools during this water emergency. And i- impose, if you can, impose fire safety standards on all new development by requiring. Fire sprinklers on the roofs, for example, or battery backup for power, especially for emergencies and for pumps. And fire shelters and, um, Commissioner Washburn was interested in imposing impact fees which are permitted. Um, and also consider updating the city's green building standards. Um, so that, a- and again, it would apply to all all new development, not just SB nine. Uh, require a level two lo- a charging outlet for each new unit and eliminate all site runoff. Uh, from new development, requiring cisterns for emergency use and for irrigation. And require California friendly landscaping, I think you're going to talk about that later. Uh, including a ban on lawns and big box trees which don't establish as well and need lots of water. And prohibit natural gas connections and require pool covers for all pools. And maybe even require carbon neutrality, for example, by planting trees onsite or elsewhere in California. If you go to the one tree planted charity, it costs only a dollar per planted tree. Um, so that that would help control new development during this water emergency and also apply to new development under SB. Nine and finally, the many planning commissioners were were kind of offended by some of the language in this, um, ordinance or in the, in in. In the introductions, for example, saying that it's not detrimental detrimental to the public interest and health and safety. Um, and it's consistent with the general plan, I mean, we didn't feel that was true, but we're only adopting it. We understand why we're adopting it because we're required to, so. I just wanted to let you know some of the comments of the planning commissioners on on development, thank you.
Thank you, that was interesting, um, Councilmember Waintron?
I just wanted to know if, um, Matt can discuss with the public, um. Or Michael, just, there's such concern about, um, high. The fact that we all live in a high fire zone and since the state does not allow us to take into consideration, um. Being in a high fire zone, what are other things that we could do as a city? Um, whether it's through an ordinance or how can we address those concerns since it can't be addressed? It can't be addressed through these actions.
I have to address that first, and I think Mr. Klein will have some further comments. First off is I'll note, the bill does not allow the city to straight up exempt. Areas within very high fire hazards, very zones like the entire city, but it does so in a backhanded way. Through a series of cross references in the statute, SB nine first exempts. Everything within a very high fire hazard severity zone and then it erases the exemption effectively. By providing that the exemption doesn't apply to any site that builds according to state required existing building standards, which is. Everything in the city because we don't allow people to build without permits. So the exception swallows the rule in legislative sleight of hand. Sacramento tied our hands, uh, in for reasons evident for their other goals. So what can we do? We can impose what staff recommends, some additional fire safety standards and I'll I'll just highlight. Uh, one, the automatic sprinkler requirement and two, um. The ten foot fire separation distance, which is not a setback. It's not measured ten feet from property lines, it's ten feet between buildings, both on the same lot and buildings next door. Uh, intended to reduce the spread of fire from building to building. What we could do beyond that would be to impose more robust fire hardening standards, those mentioned by Commissioner Harrison. Uh, and others, uh, stronger window requirements, stronger fire hardening requirements for, uh, wall materials. Smaller eaves, no requiring undented construction prohibiting, um, attics that have. Vents that become ignition sources in a wind driven fire. And staff could certainly take a look at if there was, right, council support. Uh, to come back with an item regarding more robust fire hardening standards that would be applied to any new development, not just SB nine. And I'll ask if Mr. Klein had further comments, thank you.
Yeah, I would definitely like to add to that, um, not related SB nine specifically, but I would like to mention for the council and for the public that. Moving forward, the city is updating its circulation and safety element, which is a requirement under state law. One of those is to look at, uh, how climate change is impacting, uh, the safety element element component. So that's a great avenue for the city to really look at. Um, we're identifying strategies within both the circulation element and the safety element. To make the the community safer and more resilient in, uh, emergency situations and. That public hearing right now is tentatively scheduled to start with the with the planning commission. On, uh, the first public hearing is tentatively scheduled for July twenty first. Later this year, so that's a great time for the community to to, uh, to discuss that. And the draft circulation and safety element is posted on the city's website. And it was, um, reviewed by the, uh, environmental commission and the, yeah, traffic and, not the environment, sorry, the the safety commission. And the traffic and transportation commission earlier this year, so. You know, we're trying to look at this issue from a broader perspective, um. You know, not specifically related to SB nine, but we recognize the importance of this issue for the for the community as a whole.
But I, thank you so much and thanks to Michael and Matt for answering my questions on the subject beforehand, but I wanted to bring it up. At the public, but I just think it's really important. That we look at other avenues since the state does not allow us to do it, um, as part of this. So, um, that's something I'll be asking for later this evening, but thank you so much for addressing that, I know it's a huge concern to the community.
Okay, um, I have a a couple of follow up questions, um, Matt. Why didn't, why didn't? Why didn't, or or, or Michael, why didn't you take the commission's recommendations for some of these? Suggestions from, you know, fire hardening and. Um, a moratorium on swimming pools or development, why didn't, why weren't they included?
The commission asked that we consider those outside of this ordinance as applicable to all future development, not just SB nine and ten projects. And so we view it as a as a two part process.
And then is the safety element, Michael, I mean, is that broad enough to take into account? Um, you know, looking at landscaping and, um. Pools and future growth and developments?
It doesn't look at pools because that's related to the water drought, which is, uh. That would be in our infrastructure section of the of the general plan. But it definitely looks at landscaping, um, in terms of fuel modification and using appropriate landscaping. Also creating defensible space around, uh, new neighborhoods, but I'll see if there's a way that we can create that around existing neighborhoods.
Okay. Alright, um, Mari, are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to close this public hearing.
There are no other public comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so this public hearing is closed, is there a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty two dash three ninety eight? Um, it would add section seventeen point eighty two urban lot splits and seventeen point eighty four ministerial design review permits. To title seventeen land use and development. Of the Calabasas municipal code as necessary to comply with the California law, Senate Bill nine and Senate Bill ten.
Um, I I thought we'd have a chance to make a couple of comments too.
Oh, I I thought I asked for it, go ahead.
So. Um, Matt, um, or or Michael, I guess, Klein. Um, Michael Harrison mentioned, uh, and he went kind of quickly on some of these. Some language about not inconsistent with the health, welfare and safety. And I I didn't get the whole thing, but what was he referring to exactly, what section?
He was referring to the first finding, uh, which is on page two of the ordinance under section three. The planning commission expressed concern with the originally originally drafted finding. That found that the adoption of the ordinance was consistent with certain general plan policies. Because in the opinion of, uh, the commission, it's not consistent with other general plan policies. So staff looked at it and we, as directed by the commission, added the second. Paragraph, subparagraph to finding one. Noting that while the ordinance is inconsistent with certain other general plan policies regarding community character. It nonetheless, uh, can be adopted by the council because of the supremacy clauses regarding control of state law over local laws. Um, and the reason to do so, if the council so chose, would be to enable the other limitations on SB nine developments.
So did, did you guys, did you follow the direction of the commission on that?
We did.
Like a complaint from him, but I wasn't sure what he was referring to, so I can't say for sure.
Staff, please, we implemented the direction of the commission.
Okay. Okay, that, then the what we have now is what the commission directed on that language. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Matt, um, I asked for a motion, is that where I should pick up from or?
Yes, that would be reasonable, Madam Mayor.
I'll move it if you wish.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Buzagian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
Carrie Sikes Zero?
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to continued business. This is a budget item for fiscal years twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four budgets. Kindon and Ron, are you ready to present?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, while Ron is entering the queue here, I'll give a brief introduction. This is, I think, the third time that we've come to the council with this proposed budget. And we sincerely appreciate the comments, the thoughts that have gone into this. This was our intent and Mayor, I thank you for really encouraging this year to start early on on the budget process to allow the community and others to see the document early, provide comment and discussion points. And we feel like we've accomplished that. And so we appreciate those members of the the community who have weighed into this at this point. What Ron will present is a summary of the items that were discussed at our last budget discussion. As presented in the staff report, we see this as capturing all of the directives and thoughts of the council. But we wanted to bring this one more time, just in case we have overlooked something or if there are further questions, with the understanding that on June twenty-second, we'll bring this back to the council for, as part of the public hearing. So with that, Madam Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'll turn the time over to Ron to proceed with an overview of the items specific to this discussion.
Welcome, Ron.
Thank you, Kindon. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. So this evening you have a continuation of the budget. This is our fourth meeting going over the budget. So last meeting, we had a number of different changes that were proposed to the city council, which the council gave direction on each one of those. And we incorporated each one of those changes into the into this budget document that you have before you this evening. So with that, I'll just quickly go over those changes. One change was to just fund six months of a new executive assistant one that is in the community development department. So that is at thirty thousand dollars. The next was the film festival. We funded that at thirty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand is our normal contribution. That comes from the general fund. And then twenty thousand dollars was a one-time from our ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We also funded two hundred thousand dollars in the budget for the purchase of four to five vehicles, again funded out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The Climate Action Plan is funded next year at fifty thousand dollars. The, we are funding the full allocation to Los Virginus Unified School District for their campus supervision. So that total is twenty thousand two hundred and fifty for next year. We added ten thousand dollars for business meetings and conferences in the city council budget, which is in the general fund. We added five thousand excuse me, we added five thousand dollars for Karen Calabasas Club as part of our senior center. Also part of the general fund. And then we removed the CIP project labeled turf replacement. That's been taken out of the budget. This will come under further review based on actions and direction from the council. Based on discussions this evening. So we will come back to council within a couple of months with that project re redone, if you will, for council consideration and approval. Those are all the changes that we made to the budget. So what you have tonight is an updated budget document. Again, you've looked at it before with all the accounts with the five-year CIP. We added at the, in the CIP summary, we added a funding source summary page so that you can see all the different grant funds or Prop A, Prop C transit funds or ARPA funds or whatever funds are funding all of the different capital projects. It was recommended to have like a column, you know, kind of a note saying this project is funded by this, but some of our projects are funded by multiple sources. So I thought it would be easier if we put in another matrix so you can see how much of each project, whatever funding source it may be, because some of them have two or three different funding sources. So those were the changes that we've made from the last time that we met going over the budget. So with, with that, I am happy to take any questions or comments. Or if the city council so desires, you can provide further direction or changes to the budget. And then we are all set for budget adoption at our next meeting on June twenty-second. And with that meaning, you'll have all the, all the budget adoption, which is the budget, the GAN appropriations limit, the salary resolution, the benefit program resolution. We'll also have the general fund reserve policy for the council to adopt because you gave direction on that a few meetings ago as, as well. So with that, I'm available for any questions or further direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Let me ask my colleagues if anyone has any questions or comments. And I'm not seeing any. I would I would just like to add that I want to thank our budget task force. Mayor Potem, David Shapiro and Councilmember Kraut and our staff, Ron and Kindon. We did do something very different this year. We built into the calendar a number of opportunities for the public to review the budget or weigh in and we made adjustments along the way. And here we are. It's been a smooth process. Ron, can you, I will say, I hope the software is available by next year so that it's a much easier to read document and easier to find line items. But right now, where specifically on the city's website is this draft document?
So the draft document is on the city's website. It's under the finance department under budgets. So you'll see the last couple of years' budgets and you'll also see this draft budget there as well.
Okay, so that's, if anyone has any questions, please, please go to the budget. All right, with that, there aren't any other further council comments or input, so we will move on to our next item and look at adopting this next month unless there's anything wrong. Kindon, you want to add?
No. Okay, thank you again, council. And as noted, a thank you to our budget subcommittee for wrestling from, with some very difficult topics and providing some recommendations to council on this. So thank you again.
Okay, we are going to move on to a new business item, number ten. Are there any council members that wish to take a break? Raise your hand. Otherwise, Mari, could you not only bring in Robert and Heather, I see they're in, but Dave Peterson?
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, I was going to say he's not in yet, so.
Okay, I wanted to let my colleagues and the public know that Dave Peterson from the Los Virginus Municipal Water District will be joining us. We're going to start off with a staff presentation and then ask Dave Peterson if he has anything to add that we may have missed or areas that he knows the public is particularly interested in. Then we're going to go to members of the public. And at this time, if, if you would like to provide some comments or ask questions, this is where you would raise your hand. And Mari, our city clerk, will be calling on you in, in order, I believe, of hands raised to the best of your ability. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Robert and Heather to begin the presentation. Welcome, Robert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, member of council and member of public. We work hard on this presentation. We went through several different duration after communicating with Water District. As you know, we are trying to coordinate and comply with Water District's request. Heather Milton of a landscape maintenance manager has done a great job. I would like have her to start the presentation. And I'm here to respond to any questions and concern that you may have. Heather, you can share your page if you wish.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'm going to start here with the slideshow. It's up and visible. Everyone see it okay?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the city's water conservation efforts that a number of the different departments and the city has and staff has placed together. I'll get started here. One of the items I'd like to just get started with is this is in regards to potable water. Potable water is a term used to describe drinking water. It is the water that flows from your tap that is used for drinking, cooking, cleaning and bathing. Potable water is clean, healthy and safe. The other water that we'll be talking about is recycled water. Recycled water is recovered from wastewater through an extensive treatment process. The first slide here is what the city has done in the past during drought. And these are some of the related projects that the Public Works Department has done. In twenty fourteen, fifty-eight pre-existing controllers were replaced with fifty-two weather-based evaporate transpiration smart controllers at city parks and at all city maintained landscape areas. The second phase of this in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the reclaimed irrigation system was expanded and low-flow sprinkler heads and nozzles were installed. These projects combined reduced reclaimed water usage by approximately thirty-five percent. Currently, some of the new implementation by Public Works is the Green Street Policy. The implementation of this policy includes the installation of native and drought landscape, better storm water management and water infiltration areas. Existing green elements are located on Valmar Road, Malibu Hills Road and Park Sorrento. These medians also serve to act as bio retention basins which hold rainwater and allow it to percolate into the groundwater. Future green elements are being designed currently for Calabasas Road, Los Virginus Road and Moreau Road. Currently in twenty twenty-one, this past year, the city reduced water by fifteen percent in many of its parks and medians in July and again in October voluntarily when the state emergency declaration by Governor Newsom was declared in the San Luis Obispo conference that he spoke at. Currently, again, this is the potable water statement that we took from Los Virginus that we've been working with. Potable water is a term used to describe drinking water. It is the water that flows from your tap that is used for drinking, cooking, cleaning and bathing. Potable water is clean, healthy and safe. Restricted to one day a week for eight minutes maximum per station, except for high efficiency nozzles can run for fifteen minutes. Recycled water is recovered from wastewater through an extensive treatment process during the hot summer months per David. At Los Virginus Municipal Water District, up to nine percent blend of potable water in the recycled water system can be expected. Currently, recycled water is not subject to one day per week or a runtime. Restrictions only are no runoff from landscaped areas and usage must stay within the water budget to avoid penalties. In compliance with the water district's restrictions currently, all potable water areas of landscape have been reduced from five days over twelve minutes down to one day a week for eight minutes. Some of these areas are Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the Turf and Planters, Pocket Park, Turf and Planters, the Highland Park Slope, Freedom Park Turf and Planters, Mulhall and Highway Turf and Planters and areas of Park Sorrento Turf and Planters. All reclaim water areas that have been reduced from five days a week to three days a week for ten minutes. These are city areas would be all the common benefit areas which are considered CBAs. An example would be Parkway Calabasas Medians, Park Granada, Calabasas Road, Association Park, Tennyson Swim Center, De Anza Park, Grape Arbor Park, Gates Canyon Park, Lost Virginus Road, Lost Hills Road, Agora Road, Calabasas Hills Road, Meadow Creek Lane, Lost Hills On and Offramps and Parkway Calabasas On and Offramps. The following are additional efforts that have been implemented by the city. Temporary closure of the splash pad at De Anza Park. Temporary closure of water features at Gates Canyon Park. Civic Center site water fountains will be temporarily and have been turned off. And currently, the city hall urinals will be switched out to waterless. Power washing of park amenities will be reduced. Landscape transition to native to drought tolerant plants at the Tennyson Swim and at the Civic Center site areas are currently underway. Perennial flowers will be replaced with native drought tolerant plants at city properties and common benefit areas. A meeting of the Sustainable Task Force came up with some other direction. The following are suggestions that have are up for discussion, council. The Sustainability Task Force provided direction to transition from turf to drought tolerant landscaping in city parks, medians and parkways. Only non-functional park areas irrigated with potable water are subject to the restrictions set by Los Virginus Municipal Water District. It is one day a week for eight minutes. The trees located in these areas will continue to be watered as needed. City median and Parkway areas in transition include Thousand Oaks Boulevard, six thousand one hundred square feet, Mulhall and Highway, sixteen thousand one hundred square feet, Lost Virginus Road, three thousand four hundred square feet, Park Capri, two thousand square feet and Park Granada, thirteen thousand square feet. The next is a example of non-functional park area to be transitioned. The first one is Grape Arbor Park, which is eleven thousand square feet. Next is Gates Canyon Park, fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet. De Anza Park, fifteen thousand square feet, Freedom Park, four thousand square feet. City property and private property, this is an example. The city manages special assessment districts through the Landscape Maintenance District and the Landscape Lighting Act District. Below is an example of the areas with both city and private properties. The picture here shows Parkway Calabasas where the roundabout and center medians are city property and the parkways are private property owned by the homeowners associations. The following transition would also within the LMDs and the Landscape Lighting Act districts that we would water three days and decrease it down to two days a week to conserve some of these measures. We also hope to begin discussions with the homeowners associations regarding the transition from turf areas to native drought tolerant landscaping using a plant pallet provided by the city. The sample of a plant pallet is located below you. These are some of the samples of the plants that we are already planting throughout the city and in some of the city medians. The city and in some of the city medians. The turf removal and drought tolerant planting cost estimates. These are strictly estimates. The estimated unit prices for turf removal is three dollars and ninety cents per square feet. The planting is four dollars and sixty-five cents per square feet. For a total of eight dollars and fifty-five cents per square feet. As an example, we chose Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's six thousand one hundred square feet of turf. It would cost twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to remove it. The planting would be twenty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-five. For a total of fifty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. The water savings at city parks, medians and parkways. For forty thousand six hundred square feet and estimated total sprinkler heads to be closed would be nine hundred and thirty-three sprinkler heads. There would be thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-four gallons per year of reclaimed water. One unit is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. Per unit is a dollar thirty-four. Thirty-six thousand thirty-six gallons. Per year of potable water would be saved. One unit again is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons at a cost of three dollars and ninety-four cents per unit. Your yearly cost savings would be two hundred and fifty-six dollars and three cents. For your non-functional park areas. The total square footage is forty-four thousand eight hundred. The estimated total sprinkler heads to be closed is a hundred and forty sprinklers. With the water savings of two hundred and one thousand six hundred gallons per year of reclaimed water. Your yearly cost savings is approximately three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Following that, this is the new logo for the city landscape areas. The Communications Department has made the new logo for the city landscape areas that may be transitioned to drought tolerant plants. The new logo is available to download off the city website for residents to make their own yard signs. Also, the QR code will open to the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District website for the most current information on the drought. Options for the city council to consider. City-owned landscape. Discontinue irrigation of all potable water areas in city medians and parkways. Which would be Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Mulholland Highway. And city parks, city uh, which would be Freedom Park and Pocket Park. To move forward with the transition of turf areas with reclaimed irrigation in city parkways and medians and parks in phases. To produce with to proceed with reduction of reclaimed water to two days a week in all of the city parkways, medians and parks. The next for discussion is HOA-owned landscapes. To begin working with homeowner associations within the assessment districts to reduce reclaimed water usage up to fifty percent by watering two days a week. And those are some of the suggestions.
Thank you Heather. Could you go back and leave the the talking points up of the?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one point of clarification, the first bullet where it says discontinue irrigation. Hand watering of trees would remain.
Yes, we would uh, we would make, we would modify the irrigation for the trees.
Okay, so just so people know.
It would just be for discontinuation of the potable water areas such as your turf and your planters and then we would. Work something out with the tree.
Alright, I I didn't mean to get into a Q and A here. So um. We have with us um, the general manager from Lost Virginus Municipal Water District. I thought it um, important for him to just. Say a few words in case there's anything we've missed and the presentation was great. And then also I wanted our city attorney. I know we have a lot of HOA um, participants. And I wanted to ask our Eddie, our our attorney, our city attorney to talk about. Um, the the final bullet about working with homeowner associations and. You know, trying to come up with um, some ideas there and and introducing the option, well not introducing, it's always been there. The option of if they're um, not happy working with the city. Um, about uh, how they go about um, leaving, voting themselves out of a a district. So everything's on the table, but. If um, and this would be the time again for anyone watching um, to either call in. Or to uh, raise your hand on the Zoom uh, screen and Mari will call on you, but. Um, Dave Peterson, welcome. If you're ready, um, could you kind of give us some of the latest information or?
Would you like me to start sharing at this time?
Um, I think you can leave it up for now.
Thank you, Mayor and uh, city council members and staff. I I just wanted to first just share my thanks for the leadership that you are all showing and the staff presentation. I it's. Absolutely amazing what you've done in such a short amount of time. And how thorough you've been in looking at all of your city facilities, the numbers that you have, you've evaluated cost. Um, you really have just done an outstanding job. And you know, I would love to share this presentation with all of our cities and really just encourage that they do the same. And I'll tell you, it's it's heartwarming to me to hear, you know, that really you're taking action and doing everything that you can to help save water. Um, and I so much appreciate that. It will truly help us um, in the long run and you're actually in a lot of these um, actions. You're going even beyond. What is required. Um, like for example, with the recycled water and even looking at reducing by up to fifty percent. Um, and that will indeed help us uh, because there are, as I've talked about, there are times when we have to supplement our recycle water system. Uh, with potable water. Um, so many thanks for that. I also wanted to give a shout out for the Calabasas Communications Team. Uh, they are awesome and um, have helped us to develop some videos. That are uh, being used to explain to uh, residents of Calabasas and really the whole region. About um, the watering restrictions and um, what is allowed and not allowed. And uh, those have been really helpful and they're really, really professionally produced and thank you for that. Um, so I wanted to just share a couple updates um, that might be helpful and some information, some frequently asked questions. One of, one of the most common questions uh, that we are getting is um, why can we not have recycled water connected to our home? And many people are um, wondering that and would, you know, would like to see that happen and. I just wanted to explain the challenge that we have there and that we have really strict regulations around. The use of water in general. Water is highly regulated, but recycled water is especially regulated. And recycled water is not uh, treated to be used for drinking. And because of that, we have to take a whole variety of measures to protect public health and ensure that it is not accidentally. Connected to the drinking water system where it would be used for drinking. And so that's really the impediment that we have around. Connecting recycled water to individual houses. Um, and the risk is that um, is that a. A homeowner would do a plumbing repair and would accidentally interconnect those two systems. And if and if that were to happen, it doesn't only put that single homeowner at risk, it puts everybody else at risk as well because that water could. Flow back in the system. So I just wanted to explain that. The other thing that has come up frequently and when we held our town hall, many people asked the question about fire and fire hazard. And it is on people's minds. And I just want you to know, we have heard that concern. We've taken it really seriously. I've had um, discussions with the fire department, um, with your mayor, uh, with your city manager and we have talked about this and we're working on. Um, doing everything possible to be most prepared for fire. Um, there is. With these drought restrictions, there there will be vegetation that that will not make it. And so we wanted to. Just acknowledge that and also acknowledge the importance of removing that. So all of us are accustomed to brush clearance. And brush clearance is really important and so it will be very important um, during this time of drought. Um, and I also wanted to mention tomorrow, the fire department is actually having a press conference and they're going to be putting on um. A a really well organized program beginning, I believe at nine AM to talk about. Uh, the connection between drought and wildfire and steps that everyone can take to protect themselves and their homes from wildfire. Um, including hardening of of their um, homes. So I think those are the major updates. As far as um. Water demands are going, I I wanted to mention that actually we are seeing that water demands, we're seeing the effects of conservation already. And I think that's important. We monitor in our water system every single day how much water comes in and how much water goes out. And we are seeing normally at this time of year, we would be seeing about twenty-two million gallons per day of water being used and consumed per day. And right now we're seeing between thirteen and fifteen million gallons per day. So it's. Really, we're seeing it. We're seeing that people are responding and responding in a in a big way. And and that's really great and I attribute a lot of that to the city's um, work and support and helping to get out the message. Um, so that's good news. Um, we can't be complacent. We have to stay on this and continue. But we're seeing um, good movement and and that's um, heartening. So I'll I'll stop there and of course, I'm available for uh, questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. I think that it would be helpful to hear from the public next or if we have any hands up, Mari and. And Dave, if you could just um, stand by if there's any questions specific to your operation. And Matt will um, add your information maybe at the end as well. So Mari, um, do we have members of the public that would like to speak or ask a question and? And what I'd like to do is if we have many, um, just collect them all and I know Kindan, I think you or Robert or Heather will be. Taking the questions and we can then respond at once. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we'll start with Linda Lowhill.
Welcome Linda.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay. My name is Linda Lowhill. I'm a resident of Calabasas. And I'm also a board member on the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District. And I just wanted to say I was really thrilled to see your agenda item tonight. And um, Mayor Moore, I wanted to say thank you for your last three letters coming out that have strong, um, almost entirely dealt with water conservation. And I appreciate the city's um, emphasis on that and the city's city's support in um. In promoting water conservation and the importance of how severe this drought is. Um, I loved your, I love your idea of printing a sign for our lawns to show that uh, we're. We're participating in the drought and that might sometimes explain a brown lawn. Um, and uh, I also have another idea. It's kind of fun to show, a lot of people have made tremendous changes in their lawn to move to drought tolerant. And it's kind of fun to show off your your garden or your uh, your drought tolerant landscape. And it would be fun to have a um, a means to post some videos of what Calabasas have been doing. To uh, save water on in their outdoor landscape. So uh, just thank you very much for all that you're doing. Uh, I really appreciate. Everything that the city's doing and uh, the changes that you highlighted in the in the presentation tonight were great.
Thank you Linda and thank you for your work that you do.
Next, we have Andy Mendel.
Uh, can you hear me? Yes.
Welcome.
Uh, I am, I'm the president of the Claridge homeowners association. First of all, I want to take a two seconds to thank Heather. Uh, the working with her has been uh, tremendous collaborative uh, work. So Robert and Heather and the whole team has really helped a lot, I think. Uh, promote the improvements in the whole district and OMD especially. Um, two, two basic comments. First of all, we've put in a bunch of of drought tolerant. We changed a bunch of plant material off, put a bunch of drip in as opposed to spray. Um, but I think we should follow the recommendations of a water district to go to three days a week and see how that does on the usage before we go to two days a week. Because I'd hate to see all that plant material from planted die. Um, and after the whole, you know, money's been spent. The other thing is we don't have the money to go in and change our turf areas to all. Uh, drought tolerant plants and we only have really one turf area of note and we use, people do use it as a recreational area. It's the only park-like setting there is. And other than replacing it with something like artificial turf, uh, it's really hard to play on a drought tolerant landscape. So, you know, I I think we should, you know, my, I think we're doing the right things, but I think we should start, stick with three days a week to start with and then see how that goes as far as usage.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ralph and Rhonda Rose. So I don't know which one will be speaking. Please state your name and the city you live in.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes. There's an echo.
Uh, thank you. We we've heard from some.
Do you have another, excuse me Ralph, do you have another audio device on?
Yes, we've heard from some cities that there are exemptions for water use for. Certain trees like sequoias or coastal redwoods. Does Calabasas or the Lost Virginus District have any provision for that?
Is that your question? Well, we can get to an answer in a minute. Thank you. Can we get the next, is it speaker Mari?
Yes, Michael Harrison.
Uh, good evening again, Michael Harrison, Calabasas Hills. Uh, in my HOA, uh, after Bill Millar left the city. Uh, about an acre of low water using ground covers on a slope was replaced with. Thirsty cool season turf grass and lots of annuals. Um, I I think the plants on slide eleven are great for small areas, but we need some large-scale replacement. Of turfing uh, such as in my own HOA. I'm I'm glad that the flush urinals, urinals are being replaced. Uh, the tennis and swim centers had those for years. And um, I'm just another comment. I'm not sure you always need to remove the the turf grass. I mean, that's pretty expensive. It's pretty shallow rooted. It's not like Bermuda grass or cacuia grass. Uh, I I'm my, in my yard, I've just let it die and replace it with ground covers. Um. But I do want to say kudos uh, to the Sustainability Task Force. I think you've done an extraordinary job. Uh, Mayor Mauer, council member Shapiro and all and Heather Melton and I. And also the communications team for the great logo they've created. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mari.
Barbara Gort. Barbara.
I don't see that she's coming yet. Can you move them um, in groups?
Madam Mayor, we're not able to move them in groups, so let me go to Kent Tondra. Tony, am I doing something wrong?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I had trouble on muting. I'm sorry. Kent Tondra with uh, Calabasas Hills. Um, I I kind of like uh, what Andy was saying earlier. Uh, if there's a way that we might be able to keep some of the green areas that people actually uh, use to play on. Um, or that are uh, used very often by people would be really helpful. Um, I don't sure, I'm not sure that a universal, you know, two days a week or three days a week. Uh, I'm wondering if we might be able to suggest that maybe just certain areas might get a little more water than others. That um, that need it for uh, recreational use and that type of thing, considering that everybody's yards are basically gonna. Die off if they have grass, uh, given the one-day restriction. And I basically also have a question. When it comes to, and I'm talking about recycled water, all of our green areas are are done with recycled water. And I I'm wondering if there's really that much of a loss of recycled water given the drought because um. Most of the water I assume that's being wasted is being put on irrigation. most of the water I assume that's being wasted is being put on irrigation. So I'm wondering if we, is there really a shortage of recycled water compared to when there's not a drought? And maybe question why we can't water some of the certain areas with more water and others maybe with less. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll try Barbara Gort again, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
No, her software is too old. We cannot
We cannot, we cannot bring her in. There's something going on, Madam Mayor. So we'll have to go to the next speaker. Pamela Francis. Same issue, Tony? I believe so.
Yes, they need to update their software.
Tom Sherbert. Tom, please go ahead. Are you in?
Yeah, thank you. You know, as a homeowner in Calabasas, I'm just curious about the reasoning behind the one day a week, eight minutes as opposed to maybe two days a week, four minutes. We've never in thirty years watered our lawn longer than four minutes a zone. And for us, it would be nice to be able to do it twice a week for four minutes rather than suddenly having to increase to eight minutes once a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Would it be okay with everyone if we just took a break and answered these questions that we have so far? Kendon or Robert or Heather, were you taking notes?
I was, Mayor. And and Mayor, you do have a hand up from council member Kraut if we wanted just notice that before we go to the questions.
Actually, it was regarding the questions, Madam Mayor. Can I suggest that we read the call in number for the two participants who have outdated software on their Zoom connection? So that they can call in and raise their questions as well?
I was gonna just, I was just gonna announce that they could call in council member Kraut. So those two members of the public who couldn't speak, you have the ability to call in by dialing one six six nine nine hundred ninety-one twenty-eight. And the code is eight two zero six one eight five two four five seven pound.
Can you slow down and repeat that?
Sure. The call in number is one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. And the webinar ID is eight two zero six one eight five two four five seven pound. So we welcome you to join us via phone.
And Tony, if not this meeting, maybe in the future, we can have that ready to pop up from time to time. So can you proceed with getting these answers or comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think most of these, Dave, we might have you address. So for example, the question regarding exemptions to sequoias and other trees on watering. I know just starting out with that is, you know, in general, the trees are not subject to the one day of watering and can be hand watered. And so, Dave, I think that is, there's not a limit on the hand watering on that, depending on the need of the tree. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Good. And then there was a question, I think a couple of residents asked about the three days a week versus two days a week. Again, that's one of the items that the council will be discussing later. That's a discussion item of those areas, those city owned areas and and other LMD areas. The question is if the city should reduce from three days to two days. And so we'll hold off on that until council has an opportunity to discuss that. There was also a question regarding watering two days a week for four minutes per station. Dave, is there a best way to answer that? When I, I think there's consistency in with the addresses on evens and odds, but is there anything more that you'd like to add on that?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that's one of the most frequently asked questions and it's a good one. It makes a lot of sense. Because it would be the same amount of watering just spread over two days. The short answer is that the system that was implemented by Metropolitan calls for one day watering. And it's really about being able to enforce the watering. But I think the best way to manage that is if you did want to water in four minute cycles to do it once in the morning and once, you know, in the late, later evening. And so I know there are folks that do that. Sometimes if you water for eight minutes at a time, you end up with runoff. And so if you just split that in the morning and the evening, that is a good way to to deal with that. I did forget to mention earlier too, related to the, all of the work that's going on related to landscape changing, changes. The Metropolitan rebates and perhaps that was mentioned before I joined, but I just wanted to mention that Metropolitan does offer rebates for landscape transformation. And we can help with securing those. The amount is two dollars per square foot. And so for the city being an institutional customer is eligible for up to fifty thousand square feet at two dollars a square foot. So that's a hundred thousand dollars for each meter. And for a residential customer, it's two dollars a square foot. And that's up to five thousand square feet. So that would be ten thousand dollars total.
That's wonderful.
Madam Mayor, we have additional hands up and we have one calling by phone.
Um, there's another question that I have, which was can you talk about the shortage of recycled water? Is there really one? And this might be a good time to also talk about the Pure Water Project and the use of reclaimed water. Reclaimed, recycled, it's the same, correct?
Yes, we, we sort of phased out the use of the word reclaimed and we use recycled now, but it's the same. So in short, yes, there is a shortage of recycled water. And you know, there was a time where we encouraged using as much recycled water as 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 available. But we've really reached a point now where even recycled water, we do have a shortage in the summertime. The recycled water originates as wastewater. So it's coming from everybody's homes. What we see during drought is that customers also begin to use more, less water and use water more efficiently inside their home. And so we see that in our flows to our wastewater plant and we see those decline. And so the source water, the wastewater, there's less available to make recycled water. It's most evident in the summertime. And it's less of a supply issue and more of a demand issue that when it's hot in the summer, landscaping needs more water. And so it is generally, we see irrigation demands higher. And so we do have times in the hottest summer months, usually July, August and September, when we don't have enough recycled water to meet all of the demands. And when that happens, we add potable water to the system to keep it fully functional. And so we really want to and need to avoid doing that this summer. And then the other thing is, long term, in terms of really having a more reliable supply of water, we are working on our Pure Water Project, Los Virginas Triumpho. That project will take the recycled water that we have during the winter time that's above and beyond the demands. And we will purify it to better than drinking water standards to supplement our drinking water system. So we are moving in a direction where we will reuse every single drop of water available to us. And so it's really a choice then between, you know, watering landscaping more or making more drinking water that's available and has, you know, a more versatile purpose.
All right, Kendon, did you have any more questions from that first room?
Mayor, the only other comments I think came up were a question, comments about keeping some areas or allowing some areas to be able to use more recycled water. And I think those residents were talking about common areas or functional grass space that is used for recreational purposes. And so I think, again, that's more of a policy discussion that will be held later on, Mayor.
Okay. All right, Maureen, I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, we have Nishtha Gold followed by Ron.
Yes, thank you so much. So I'm a resident of Calabasas. And we also have property and other, other areas in California. And other water districts are promoting gray water usage. And we have a substantially large lawn here. Is there any promotion or some sort of a incentive to use gray water for our lawns?
Dave, do you want to grab that?
Good question. So we, gray water systems are, you know, it is an option available to you. It's not something that we have promoted as a water district primarily here because we recycle all of our water. And so because of that, gray water systems, they don't really help as a whole so much in our service area. But in other parts of the state, especially in areas in Northern California where recycling is not as prevalent, gray water systems are a great way to reuse the water on the property. But with all that said, there's still value in doing a gray water system in that you can capture that water right on your property and reuse it. And so there's a cost savings potentially there. And it also helps you to be sort of more sustainable. So there's value in it. It's just not something that the water district has really been promoting because we already recycle all of the water that we collect through the wastewater system.
Okay, thank you. And then other water districts also are promoting mulching and they have workshops and so on and so forth. Are you guys planning to do something like that to help homeowners understand how to counteract this water shortage?
Yes, in fact, so we do have, we do have compost available for customers. We give the compost away at our facility on Los Virginas Road. And we have talked about doing, doing some workshops like you described to give tips on how to use mulch and compost to help retain soil moisture and reduce watering needs.
So it's in the works sometime in the future?
Yes.
Perfect. And then my last question is, you know, we're in areas which are very prone to fires. So it's very concerning that we're letting our, our trees, everything dry out and make it more fire prone. How, how exactly do we counteract that? I mean, it's sort of scary to have all this dry, dry, you know, especially on Los Virginas Road. You see a lot of dry weeds and all kinds of things. It's just ready to roast.
Thank you. That's your three minutes and stuff. And Dave, do you want to go ahead and answer that?
Sure. You know, that, that question, I know it's on everyone's minds. And I mentioned, I even had a call with the mayor earlier and the city manager about this topic. It is a concern of ours as well. I'll say we've been in close contact with the fire department. In fact, part of the reason I signed on to your meeting a little late is I was on the phone with the fire department talking about that very issue. The fire department's being very helpful and helping to get out information and guidance and also even to support us in ensuring that we have we have the water that's needed for fire protection and fire suppression. But in talking with the fire department also, it's really important to them that looking at fire safety holistically and that it is more than just keeping things green. It's about home hardening, also keeping good housekeeping, so not having material and things placed around your house that are flammable. And keeping a clear, a clear defensible space around your property. I am thinking of the value of having some kind of a workshop that's joint with the fire department and perhaps even with the city to talk about this issue because this issue has come up repeatedly. And I, I think it's worth having more discussion about it and hearing directly from our firefighters about what are the best things that we all can do to protect our properties.
Thank you, Dave. And we would be very willing to be a partner in that type of workshop. Absolutely. Maureen, next.
We have a person named Ron. Ron, please state your name and the city you live in.
Ron?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. My name is Ron Ross. I live in Calabasas. And, you know, I've spoken to many of my, you know, fellow homeowners that live in the community and everything. And I think, first of all, I think it's a big mistake to only allow one day of watering. I mean, I have family that lives in West Hills, Department of Water and Power. They're doing two days a week. Also in Thousand Oaks, they're doing two days a week. And just from a standpoint of where if you're a hungry person and we have one sandwich and I tell you, you can't eat until the following week. It's a big difference if I cut that sandwich in half and I tell you can eat, you know, three days apart. It's going to sustain that person. The same with the planting, you know, or the trees or the grass or everything else. So I really think it needs to be reconsidered from the standpoint of doing two days a week. Same with other cities that are around us that are doing two days a week. So that's the first thing which I think is, is really huge. One day a week, everyone's going to die. Two days a week, it's got a chance, you know. Second thing is, I think from the community standpoint, again, I don't know what bureaucracy aspect of it is, but if the city of Calabasas as a whole, we have our public parks and our, and our public things that need to be watered versus our homeowners that have the private properties. I'm thinking that if, as an aggregate, if we're going above and beyond and reducing more than we have to from the city public watering grounds, why couldn't some of that water be reallocated to homeowners? From the standpoint of be able to water their, their lawns and, and keep the greenery. I mean, you work your butt off, day in, day out, you pay taxes, you do all this kind of stuff and you buy a house and you want to have greenery. I don't want to have turf. I want to have a greenery. I live in Calabasas. If I want no greenery, I live in Nevada, you know. So, and I do understand that we have to conserve the water. But if we're going to meet on the public grounds, what the water requirement is, okay, I get it. But if we're going to go an extra twenty, thirty, forty percent by reducing it, allocate it back to the homeowners as a balance, as an aggregate of a city, from the public and private, do an aggregate water usage. So that's the second thing I want to say. And by the way, you know, I appreciate whatever he's doing, just worsening the concerns of, of my fellow homeowners. And then lastly, from the standpoint of the water district, why don't these water districts all combine, LWP, our waters district, and try and explore desalinization? This drought's not going to go away a year from now or five years from now, twenty years from now. In Israel, they had droughts nonstop. What do they do with the desalinization? The technology is there. Why don't these water districts, you know, combine all their resources, all the money that they have, and just to figure that out and provide water to the state of California? Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we'll try Pamela Francis again.
Sure, we can answer that question later. Go ahead.
Pamela, we're not able to bring you in, but we do have a caller and I believe is one of the persons who tried to speak before. If that's you, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. So the caller with the phone number four oh eight, please state your name and the city you live in.
Hi, this is, my name is Barbara Gort and I'm the HOA president for Mont Calabasas. Just want to make sure you can hear me now.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions in looking through all the information. My first comment relates to going to one day of watering. Our neighborhood has just under five hundred acres. We have over two hundred zones. We have a weather based system for irrigation. It is not feasibly possible for us to water our neighborhood in one single day. So I just need to kind of put that out there. And I, I wanted to know whether you've looked at that. I mean, it's, I, I understand the reasoning and what we're trying to achieve here. But I guess I go back to, if we're being good with our water and we're being careful with our water, limiting us to one day basically means that we have to make decisions as to where we're going to open up our defense in our neighborhood and what we're going to let dry out because we cannot feasibly water two hundred zones in a single day. So that's the first thing I want, I want to kind of put out there. And, and I don't know whether anyone's even thought about that at this point in time. The second thing is with regard to converting the medians, for example, Los Virginas Road, if I'm understanding correctly, If I'm understanding correctly, in reading the, the information that was provided, as being part of the LLAD, that cost is going to be borne by us to convert. So if there's through these four hundred square feet in the median at eight dollars and fifty-five cents a foot, that twenty-five thousand dollars is going to be covered by the LLAD, which we are part of, in on Lost Virginous Road. So I just want to confirm that I'm understanding that correctly as well.
Okay. So the first question about your property, Dave, I don't know if you can answer that now or if you'd like her to follow up since it's so narrow and focused. And then the other one, and the other one that's about.
That's going to have this issue.
I'm sorry?
We're not going to be the only property that's going to have this issue.
I'm, I'm, I'm deferring to Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, this, the, the roles that have been adopted are indeed one, one day a week. And I realize it, it does make it challenging, but that is, that is the program that was approved by Metropolitan and that has been passed on to us. And so.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me be, let me be clear. Sorry, I, I don't, I don't, and I'm not talking about from a, from a consumer standpoint. And I, I apologize. Let me, let me take a step back.
And, and let me, I'm, you know what, I'm just, excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt. You can ask your next question, but it's a three-minute limit because we have quite a few speakers. So this will be your last comment or question, please. Thank you.
Well, I guess, I, I, I'm trying to clarify. My question is, I, I'm not from a personal property standpoint. It's from a community standpoint. When we convert down to the two days a week for our neighborhood, not for personal homeowners, for our, our, our neighborhood, what we water in our neighborhood, the surrounding areas for our neighborhood, our common areas, we can't possibly get it watered in two days a week.
Um, Dave, I.
Mayor, I'll just say it is, it is a one-day-a-week restriction. And, you know, we're certainly willing to work with you if you want to talk about, you know, how to adapt to that. But you, you will need to do it in that one day.
Mayor. Speaking about is her common areas are reclaimed water.
Oh, oh.
So her common areas are reclaimed water. They are allowed currently three days a week.
Got it. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. It's okay.
And Dave, if, if I can interject here.
And I, I can call Barbara also. I, I can call or meet with the homeowners association too.
And Mayor, if I can interject again, and Dave, thank you just for that. Again, this is the discussion that the, the council will have as part of that policy is whether or not recycled watered areas that are part of these HOAs should be reduced from three days a week to two. And so I think it's good to hear, hear Ms. Your heart's concerns about the number of stations and the difficulty in watering in two days or a one day with the reclaimed or recycled water. So again, that, that will be up for further discussion with the council, not necessarily a question to, to respond to at this time.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, we have another speaker, Lynn. Lynn, please state your full name and the city you live in. Please unmute yourself, Lynn. Okay, Lynn is in, but it's not unmuting.
Hi.
There you go.
Hi, thank you.
There we go.
Thank you, everybody. And, and I, we do appreciate the hard work and everybody trying to navigate the drought. Which, by the way, isn't a surprise and it's, it's quite disappointing that our water district has not been here four or five years ago before the constituents of the water district and the city spend a lot of money on greenery that we now have to replace. I, I really am quite, the elephant in the room is everybody's lawn will die one day a week. If we water one day a week, everybody's lawns will die. So here's my question. Are you asking us all to, at this point, let our lawns die? Because wasting water one day a week isn't worth it. So if you're asking us all to replace our grass, then is the city, Calabasas, or the water district going to pay us all to replace our grass? No rebates, pay us. And it, it makes no sense how we got here so quickly at all. So I appreciate you think you're doing a great job, City Council. I appreciate Water District, you think you're doing a great job, but you really are blindsiding all of us and it's not fair. As the other gentleman, Mr. Ross, said, we pay our taxes. We, we, we support the city and you've left, left us all without any water. And I appreciate there's a drought, but there's been a drought for five years. This is not a surprise at all. And we could have started this in the winter and tried to figure it out. Let people plant drought tolerant plants in the winter or in the fall when they would have now, you know, taken root. So really, on the one hand, I appreciate what you're doing, way too late. And the elephant in the room is everybody's lawn will die one day a week. So should we just stop? Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, what is your last name, please?
Horath.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, we have another caller, which I think is another person who couldn't speak. Eight one eight, five two one, phone number. If you want to speak, please press star nine and start six to unmute yourself. Apparently not, Madam Mayor, we have no more speakers.
Okay. All right. So, um, we've got.
Madam Mayor, I, Madam Mayor, I take that back. Andrew Schrader just raised his hand. We're trying to bring them in.
Okay, can you hear it?
Yeah, yes.
Hi, Council. Thanks for hearing this item tonight. You know, I have to be honest, I'm a little embarrassed by some of these comments. This is not a surprise. We're, we're not, we're not actually in a drought. This is a drought's end. This is a new season of water scarcity. When I moved into my house here in, in twenty seventeen, the sellers had put in a brand-new lawn that they were watering four times a week. It was beautiful. It was soft. It was squishy. It was lush. And I let it die. We're not in a drought. Climate change has made it impossible for us to store our water as snowpack in the high Sierras any longer. It snows and then it melts really quickly. The way that we used to, to store our, our water was as snow and it would slowly melt throughout the year into, into June and July. But now it snows and it melts within a few days. So it, it's really not a surprise if you're paying attention. If you're not paying attention, it's your own fault. In September, if we don't get significant rain this year, which we're not expecting, we'll have no days available to water, zero days. Dave Peterson's working as hard as he can to find an alternative. N W D has known about this for a long time because I staffed my boss on the Metropolitan Water District Board back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty sixteen, and we raised these issues very loudly. And we really needed new leadership on MWD. We've got it a little bit too late. We definitely need some new Metropolitan Water District leadership from our own board. We need somebody who's actually an elected member of our Lost Virginous Water District Board, not somebody that's emeritus, who we don't have any, any accountability for. But it, it's embarrassing to hear people say, oh, this is a surprise. Oh, we shouldn't have this. This has been happening. It's going to continue to happen. If you stop watering altogether right now, you're going to lose your trees. So you should keep your trees going as long as possible. Anyway, thank you, Council, for hearing this. It's important to step up and use water responsibly. And I appreciate that you're going to do that.
Thank you. Mari, are there any other hands up? Any other speakers?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor. You know what, Pamela, Madam, Madam Mayor, Pamela Francis is trying to speak again. Let, let me see if we can bring her in. You know what, she, she lowered her hand. Disregard, disregard. No more. We have no more, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. Colleagues, we have before us up on the screen some concepts. They're really not fleshed out too detailed. Staff is looking for direction on what we'd like to see in the city. And as far as it relates to our LMDs and the LLD as well. I did note at the beginning of the conversation that the first bullet, while it says discontinue irrigation of all potable water areas in city medians, there would be hand watering of the trees in Mulholland Highway. And many of these have beautiful trees. The second bullet, move forward with the transition of turf areas with reclaimed irrigation in city parkways, medians, and parks in phases. The next concept, and these are all open to new concepts as well, proceed with reduction of reclaimed water to two days a week in all of the cities, parkways, medians, and parks. And HOA-owned landscape, begin working with the HOAs in the assessment district to reduce reclaimed water usage up to fifty percent by watering two days a week. Matt, can you quickly jump in here for the HOA portion? If, if an HOA is not happy with the direction we're going and how it affects their properties, they have the ability to lead the district. And how do they do that?
I happen to jump in, Madam Mayor. So, and if I could take one step back just to put it in context. For the areas that are within HOA-owned land, but landscape irrigation is currently funded by the LMDs and the LLAD, there's a split in authority between the money and the land. The money is controlled by the city council majority, that is, of course. The land is owned by the HOA, so the city council could direct as a policy matter reduction in water usage and thus reduction in spending the funds on water down from the proposed three days a week as limited by the water district down to two days a week or otherwise direct adjustments in the landscape costs. That is solely within the city council's control because the city council sits as the board of the LMD and the LLAD, the LMDs of the LLAD. City council sitting as the board controls the funding and thus can choose to reduce it. City council cannot spend the, the money on things that are not in the purposes for which it was collected, namely landscape irrigation, landscape maintenance, streetlights, and similar other public improvements, sidewalks, pedestrian improvements. As long as the money is spent within that broad category of improvements, then it is legal. But the city council can choose within that broad category where to allocate the funds and thus has the power to choose to reduce the, the water spend. The council could also choose to spend the money on a different plant pallet in the HOA areas. There, the HOA would need to consent because it's their land, city money, but their land. If an HOA was unhappy with the decisions that were made for a given area, the HOA can pull out of the district. In sum, the process there, it goes HOA by HOA, each of which is a zone within one or the other of the landscape districts. And it begins with a petition from, signed by the necessary number of homeowners. And then that goes to public hearing and then confirming protest, protest process or vote process, similar to how the assessments are increased every so often. It's a notice, petition signed by requisite minimum, and then a process for each homeowner to register their opposition or support, in that case for detachment. And if there's any HOA that would like to consider that option, thereby ending the assessment in their zone and allowing, pulling that bill off the property taxes. And then the HOA could choose to increase their assessment or otherwise deal with their land entirely on their own, independent of the city and thus within their control. Any HOA that wanted to do that can contact staff for more information on how, on how exactly that process works. One note, of course, to bear in mind is that if an HOA was to pull out, the other HOAs within that same district would not see an increase in their assessment because the city cannot simply take the, the other costs that would be spent on the other benefits and, and put past them back. The other assessments may increase slightly to account for the common area costs within each HOA, but that'd have to be done through a new engineer's report. And in the end, it would be subject to the control of the homeowners. Key there, it's the homeowners, not the HOA itself. The HOA is the representative, but the decisions regarding the, the property team process for detachment to pull out of the district is by a majority of the homeowners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kindon, I'm not sure what would be the most helpful. I can go around and get all the council's input on each one of these, one at a time. Is there a preference on staff's side on how to proceed to get direction?
Yes, Mayor, that's exactly what I was just going to suggest. I think if, if that's okay with you, I think we should hear from our council members. And then if there's need be, we can also clarify these options of, of discussion just to make sure that, that they're clear and understandable from what's being discussed as the policy.
Okay. Mia Protim Shapiro, you and I were on the Sustainability Task Force. Would you like to go first or would you like to hear from our colleagues first?
I, I'd like to hear from our colleagues, please, if you're okay with that, Mayor.
I'm fine with that too. And Councilmember Crowe.
Oh, thank you. And thank you to Heather and to the rest of the staff, to Kindon for the presentation. Thank you also to, to David Peterson for joining us this evening. I've got a few things I'm going to try to run through them as quick as possible. We had some correspondence from somebody in the public regarding the splash pads stating it was recycled water and we should be able to keep using it. Could we confirm that it is potable water? Heather, is that something you could answer for us?
Yes, that's, it's potable water.
Okay, thank you. Also, the sample plant, plant pallet that you gave us was fantastic. It's nice to see that we have beautiful plants in colorful pallets in our native plants. There's also drought tolerant grasses. I didn't see any of those in the presentation. Are we recommending any areas where we might be substituting turf with drought tolerant grasses?
We can. That was just a sample pallet. We used examples off of the existing medians that we've already planted. So that's how come we just happened to use those ones, but there are native grasses.
But for example, the Highland Park slope is one of the areas on our list. That would be a great candidate for a, a native grass as opposed to plants, right?
Yes.
Okay. The turf replacement grant, the two, the, the rebates from MWD, they're, they are for homeowners and then they are for institutional, I believe was the term. Mr. Peterson, that you used. My question would be the HOAs, when their turfs are replaced, which program do they fall under?
I believe they would fall under commercial or institutional. And I'll verify that.
So they would be eligible for the greater than five thousand square foot number?
Yes.
And another question regarding that program is, I know in years past, you had to show photographs of live grass in order to get the rebate. Will we be able to get rebates if the grass dies before we file our rebate?
Yes, we actually asked them to remove that requirement.
Okay, fantastic. When we get to the reclaimed water, the next question I had, if you could help me out, Heather, is there, there are several areas like Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the Pocket Park, Freedom Park, Mulholland Highway and Park Sireno, as well as the Highland Park slope that are on potable water. Is there anything proposed and is it feasible to get reclaimed water over to them at this point in time?
Several years ago, there was a collaboration between D W P, Lost Virginous, and the city to run a re-recycled line up actually Valley Circle up to Mulholland Drive. I am not sure what happened with that project. It was probably about ten years ago. And then it was supposed to tee and go up to AC Stell School. As far as that goes, perhaps David Peterson or, or Robert Yalden might know more information. I remember there was two meetings about eight years ago in regards to that. And I, I honestly don't know whatever happened, why it was never done. In regards to T O Boulevard, yes, we could. yes, we could, in those areas in particular, we would have to look into and see where there is a connection. We would have to work with the engineers over at Lost Virginus to see point of connections and if it is um able to be done, but it can be looked into.
Okay, if we could look into those, I think that'd be great because when we talk about reclaimed water, recycled water having nine percent potable water to supplement it. If we change those from potable water to recycled water, we're saving ninety-one percent water. Uh that'd be our biggest grab ever, so I think that should be included in our list of projects. Uh that's it, my question, so real quick comments. Uh as the homeowners association mentioned, two hundred zones times eight minutes a zone is twenty-six hours. You cannot do twenty-six hours worth of watering in a twenty-four hour day. We understand the hardship, it's uh and we'll work with you somehow to get that solved. Um with Gray Barber Park, I saw we're looking at doing some turf replacement there. That is typically where the dog walkers stop for their dogs to do their business and we do have two dog waste stations there. Those would need to be relocated to probably another area of the park or perhaps in the uh a Saratoga grass on the opposite side of the street where dogs could continue to do their business. Uh do I I don't want us to overlook that. And then lastly, in regards to the public comments, I do want to say Lost Virginus Municipal Water District has been working very hard for us here. Uh our council has not been surprised by that. Uh I gotta give recognition to Mayor Mary Sumauer, who has been raising this alarm for quite some time uh and pushing us towards conservation. And I certainly support moving towards these conservation measures and some drought tolerant plants. Uh we certainly don't want to get rid of our functional turf, uh turf that is used in in sports fields and other play areas. But uh the the final comment I've got to make, um and we touched on this at the first meeting. This problem and somebody mentioned neighboring communities that are watering two days a week, simply put for the public. The Metropolitan Water District dictated the one day per week of watering. It's not a choice of ours. It's not a choice of the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District. That was one of two compliance methods that they had to vote on, and that is the way that the Metropolitan Water District voted. The problem that we face is that because of the elevation that we sit at and because of the lack of pumps in the infrastructure for Met- Metropolitan Water District, we do not get a redundant supply of water from the Colorado River that most of Southern California enjoys. So I'm going to continue to bang that drum and to help uh Lost Virginus Municipal Water District push on the Metropolitan Water District to build those pumping stations and get us that redundancy to get us the same level of water redundancy that our fellow members of Southern California have. And with that, thank you.
For a point of clarification, so the um the options to consider, and again, I I'm guessing the next step would be whatever direction we give staff, they would expand on it. Um do you have any opposition to any of this?
Uh no, I'm in favor of each of these. Uh I would certainly be flexible with the HOAs depending on what their requirements are, as long as they live within the three days a week of recycled water. Um so I I want to offer some flexibility there depending on what my fellow council members share. I I have an open mind there. And then, as I mentioned when I spoke, I would like to add the conversion of potable water to recycled water for any of those uh six locations that are feasible.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Peter um from staff? Otherwise, I'll go on to Councilmember Weintraub.
Thank you, and Peter raised my biggest question was why we don't have potable water along Mulholland Highway, Freedom Park, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So I appreciate what Heather her response, but I would like to um absolutely make it a priority to work with Lost Virginus Municipal Water District or if in this case, if it was DWP to see how we could how we could bring uh recycled water to those areas. There's really no reason that um those conversations should have been dropped before, so that would be um my biggest priority. I have no issues making the decisions for our own city-owned landscapes, but I think with the HOAs, we should not be dictating more than what the Water District has already set out. This is a lot for everyone to um take in all at once. I think learning that there's money available through Metropolitan Water District to pull out um your grass and that there is financial support would be helpful and that we could work with the HOAs to make sure that they have that information. But I think we should leave it up to them that the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District has already set what they think is appropriate and we're following their guidance, the same reason that we're doing one day a work a week versus two days a week. You know, we're we're going with the guidance that has been established. So I think if some HOAs want to go down to two days a week, um that's great, but at this point, I think we should stick with what the Water District has proposed and I think we should work, you know, hand in hand. People brought up like the grass area, the kids play. I mean, I just think we should work with each HOA on their individual needs, so that would be um that is what I support, and I think it would be great if we could message out to our residents that there's financial support for transitioning to drought tolerant landscapes. And the other thing that I want to mention is that, here, I want to pull up the website real quick. Shoot, where is it? Dave can help me. Um that through the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District, you can sign up to get a daily reading of your water and you can get like text messages alerts. It takes a little bit to get it right. Um I had mine set wrong, so I was getting texts all day long that I was using more water than I really was, but it's a great service through the Water District and you can track everything to see how you're doing from month to month, day to day. So I highly um recommend that everyone sign up for that and maybe through our own social media channels, um the Weekly Letter. We can get that information out to the members of the public. So I hope I answered the questions that the options we're considering tonight.
I I do have one question, follow-up question for you, but it really um starts with um Heather, it's the HOA owned landscape on some somewhere in your presentation, I thought I saw um presenting a pallet of drought tolerant, fire resistant plants that we've been using in the city. When you're aiming to work with HOAs on reducing reclaimed water, would part of the strategy being this pallet replacing some uh thirsty plants with the pallet that was in this slide presentation?
Yes. And some of the HOAs, they also, when we meet, um we also have a book, a very good book that the Lost Virginus Municipal Bar District also provides that I also use.
Great. And so then now I'll go back to Councilmember Weintraub. You you made it and your point that you wouldn't want to go beyond what the Water District is at as far as water usage, whether it's reclaimed or potable, but how do you feel about providing a a pallet of options to reduce that water usage?
Well, I guess that's what I was saying, that if we're mandating this, I mean, this is the first time I've heard tonight that there's financial support available. Like, I never knew that. I don't think our HOAs knew that. So we were basically Yeah, I was coming into this meeting thinking we're basically imposing on our HOAs and then they have to figure out their funds when their budgets have already been um developed for next year. So, you know, it kind of changes things, but I still think I want to get more information on this program, you know. I think Dave mentioned that the HOAs would be under the commercial or industrial category, but just will our HOAs really be financially covered for this transition? I understand that we've been in a drought for many years, but these new regulations are happening very quickly and I understand what we're trying to accomplish, but I mean, we're also you you're also always told you're not supposed to replant in the heat of the summer and now that's what we're saying. So I want to get some guidance, like we're coming up with some policies, but is this is this the most prudent way to accomplish what we're they accomplish the goal? Is this the most prudent way to accomplish the goal? And the other thing I wanted to mention, and I reached out to Heather and Erica. We talk about pulling up the grass at Freedom Park, but I know Freedom Park is on the table for uh being redesigned, so I just don't want to do anything and plant some things that might have to be pulled up again. So I just want to be mindful of that, that we're not causing us unnecessary expenses.
Okay, great. All right, um next, Councilmember Buzajin.
Um yes, most of my questions have been answered, but I wanted to go to the bullet points. Um I did have one question on the first bullet point. Am I understanding then from the presentation that we are uh going to handwater the medians?
We'll either handwater the trees or we'll look into um making adjustments with the existing irrigation to make sure that the trees get the water that is required to survive.
Is I I heard that with the medians and uh the parkways. I didn't hear that with regard to the two parks that are mentioned.
Oh, no, it's it's across the board.
Across the board.
Yes, it would be across the board.
Also, is this Highlands Park? I'm trying to visualize everything there. It's not very big, I know, and it doesn't have what greenery is at Highlands Park exactly?
Um at that Highlands Park, there's a small slope that is a mix of of different ground covers and um it already has mixed in there some native plants. It it's um it's not very large at all. It's it's very small and then the rest of it, the back small slope side of it is oak trees and to I guess you would say the north side of it is California pepper trees.
Okay. Um I am okay with uh bullet point number two. And uh I'm okay with bullet point number three. I, as my colleagues have stated before me, I would like greater flexibility given to our homeowners associations to the extent uh legally possible. I agree, we should not be creating extra things for them uh than what the uh Water District has required. Um I did have a question also on page eleven, which I I too found very attractive. And that is um this this plant pallet, is this, where are these plants exactly actually going? Um is this just an offering to the HOAs if they want it? Or uh or is this in the landscape districts or is this uh we're consciously replacing these into our medians and into our parks?
This is just an example of some native and drought plants to give people an idea. We can provide a much larger pallet, but every area that pallet would be different depending on the location of whether it is turf or whether it's a planter, whether it gets morning sun, afternoon sun. So these are just examples of some of the plants that can be used, and these were the plants that were used on the Valmore medians. Where that is a drought resistant median that has zero irrigation.
Okay. All right, um then that is the substance of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Shapiro.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank staff for this the hard work and I do appreciate the presentation. I think all of us were impressed with, I think it was page eleven on our handout uh of the some of the palette and and potential color and beauty that is available or will be available. Uh and also thank you, Mayor, for your hard work on this project. I do have a couple of questions and comments. Um and I guess the first one, maybe if Dave is on, he can answer it. The just to confirm my understanding and and listening to you at some of the in the town hall and so forth is that while we're talking about homeowners changing out and planting drought tolerant plants and pallets and so forth, your confirmation from uh the Water District and it is not to do that now because the plants uh take too much uh at this point to take hold and get established, so wait till I don't know if it was the fall or what what timeframe, so I want to make that clear that that is is your position. It is the Water uh District's position.
Yes, that's correct. I'm glad you you mentioned that, Councilmember Shapiro. It it is our recommendation, but it it's not a requirement. And it is a choice that people will make, but we are recommending to hold off on making those changes until later this year and, you know, it's generally not recommended to change landscaping i- in the summertime.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Again, I've gotten a lot. I'm sure we all have gotten a lot of emails, calls, we've heard tonight from the public, some concerns. We're gonna hear more, I'm sure. I'm sure you hear ten times what we hear. Um also, uh it I I want to confirm, if you can, the timeframe, because I was asked that actually at the foundation meeting uh for the rebates, the timeframe to to qualify, even qualify for the rebates and get information back is not right away. It takes some time, correct?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, so residents shouldn't anticipate that they're gonna immediately turn around, get rebates and then go ahead and put in a drought tolerant pallet this summer to to remedy what the yards may or may not look like. Also, I was asked and just for confirmation, because on the last item under the HOA, the bullet point on landscape, it talks about reducing fifty percent. Isn't the reduction uh what has been done already, the HOAs to three days a week? Isn't, is that already a fifty percent reduction at that point from water usage?
On the recycled water system, actually what what we're uh currently calling for is a uh twenty-five percent reduction. And we actually haven't specified a watering day restriction on recycled water. Um and so really, what what we're calling for is that twenty-five percent reduction. It's probably something we'll need to look at as as things go forward. But um that's where we are currently.
Okay, and I would uh join with my colleagues, at least I'm working backwards, Mayor, on the on the sheet. Uh with that one, with the amount of emails, texts, calls, even at the foundation event, I was stopped a couple of times with residents and uh parts of the different water districts, uh the the maintenance districts indicating their concern over this, so I would like us to take a good look at this or work with the HOAs before deciding uh to move something to two days a week. Um and then the only other question, Ron isn't on, so he probably can't answer this uh now, maybe Kindy can. If some of the HOAs leave uh the uh the district, will that affect in any way our budget, which is coming forward to us the next meeting? When I refer to, for example, uh partial salaries, et cetera, partial costs. And that's something we should know before we make any decisions as well.
And and Mayor Protim, I can answer that now. Um Mayor Mauer, is that uh appropriate to answer this point?
Yes.
Um so it it would not affect this upcoming year's budget. Uh and as Matt um discussed, that process to go through that that detachment would take some time. Uh if in fact um there are multiple HOAs that do pull out, there will be a a reduction in the LMD and LLC revenues, uh but there'd also be a reduction in costs. Um uh and and so it it'd be a combination. We haven't fully uh costed that out to see where that would be. The immediate effect would not be this fiscal year, it'd be going forward.
Okay, that's something we we should at least be prepared for in advance, if that's the route this is gonna go. Um just briefly, as I as I said, and no, no difference in what I said in in our meetings. Uh I support uh number bullet point one. I support bullet point two with the caveat, again, has been mentioned by our colleagues. If there are active play areas and uh other areas that we just take this gradually and do it in phases as as is set forth. And uh as far as bullet point three, uh I'm okay with that as well, and the HOA I've already mentioned my thoughts on it. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. I just uh have a a couple of follow-up questions. Um first of all, I I'm I'm really um really pleased with what we've really pleased with what we've done and where we're heading. Um, this is what Calabasas is known for, beautiful yards and environmental um, stewardship, and I think we're doing, we can do it, and we will do the best of both. Um, together, working with HOAs and individuals. Um, couple of questions, Dave. Um, help me with the math here. If you're, if you're asking for reclaimed water to be reduced by twenty-five percent, how many days a week of watering does that equal?
Good question. It, it depends probably on the time, the amount of time that folks are irrigating. So we didn't specify, but you know, normally normally during the summertime, you'd be irrigating probably three days a week. So I think i- if you, if, if you consider it three days a week and probably reduce from there, that would probably tell you where you're at, but it's just, I think the best way to do it is, is look at irrigation time and how long you're irrigating. Sorry, I'm not giving a
Yeah, well, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll get some clarity because um, as one of the speakers said, we could start at three days and see if that's that's a reduction enough, not go to two days, but maybe we just need that, a little bit more information there. Um, I'm really excited by the palette that Heather has come up with in our city already, and the idea that um, that this could be throughout the city, this common look of, of beautiful drought tolerant, um, is exciting. I will say that we discovered when we started discussing this, that there is a, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't mean to panic anyone, but there's a shortage of, of, of drought tolerant plants right now because of the demand. And if there are any HOAs still on the call, um, we've heard that planting shouldn't happen during the peak of summer, so we're looking at the fall and, and winter. I think that people should start getting um, their orders in. Um, I also wanted to say something about what really is gonna happen. And we had a conversation about this earlier before this meeting and about being very forthcoming. And one of the speakers was very uh, forthcoming. What's going to happen is things are going to die. Um, and do we really want to use water on things that we know are going to die? Um, and what are we going to do with the dead vegetation? I mean, we, we can't create an additional fire hazard and um, so there are some real challenges and some heartache and some really difficult choices ahead. Um, but I want to let the public know that at the end, if we do our job right and um, we can make a difference in you know, water, uh, water levels and planning for the future, because we've heard this and we know this is this is not temporary, this is not a drought, this is from climate change. And so I'm optimistic that we're heading down the road, but I'm a realist and I know this is very, very difficult and and people will be unhappy. Um, and um, uh, but I, I'm, I'm proud of, of the work we're doing. So I support all of this. Um, Kendon, is there any clarification you need further from the council on the concepts or next steps? I think that as soon as we can get the information about um, the grants, grant money and, and Dave, I don't know if you know this or about this particular um, rebate or grant. It, it tends to disappear. It's kind of first come, first served, and I would like to get on this. And get our plans worked and get the rebates information out. And so we'll work closely with you, I guess, on that information. And Kendon, do you have any, do you need any further direction?
I do. Mayor, if I could just go through these three bullet points uh, for clarification, and this is as much for council as it is for my staff. Uh, just so we're all on the same page. Uh, so with bullet point number one. Um, so the council is aware, we are in compliance currently with the uh, district's um, uh, mandate or uh, requirement to reduce potable water irrigation to one day a week. So we've we've gone from what we were watering in these areas that are listed in that, in that first bullet point to one day of uh, irrigation um, a, a week. What uh, moving forward with this one, that would mean that we, again, would turn off all irrigation uh, to those areas except for um, saving trees. And so I just want to be clear with that, and then because it is with potable water, um, there probably would not be any replanting at this time. So that, I just want to be very clear on that because it's potable water, no replanting at this time. Um, the
If I could, I'm sorry, if I could add, and it was to address ornamental planting that we were trying to um, avoid for right now during this crisis.
Correct, correct.
And, and you, and also laying down, not a bark, because we know bark is flammable, but some other kind of decorative mulch, not mulch, or something, rock, DGS, something.
Yeah, I, I thi- I think that helps. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the second one, uh, Heather, if you could go back to, if we could start with slide seven. So, and let me just read this before you leave this slide, Heather. So here is um, the the transition of turf areas in parkways, medians, and, and, and our different parks in phases. And I just want to go back to those slides and and highlight again what we're looking at. So if you could start with slide seven, Heather, on that. Perfect, right there. Thank you. Well. There we go. So we're looking at um, a, a transition in turf areas with these five bulleted points um, listed here, uh, quite an extensive amount of square feet. Um, again, we're looking at that uh, where there are trees, our effort is to maintain and save those trees. And then we would start the process of uh, removing turf and then planting um, uh, drought tolerant plants. Again, as, as Dave mentioned, and, and Mayor, as you've mentioned, there is a difficulty in getting plants, but also um, the recommendation is not to plant now. With reclaimed water, there's, uh, uh, again, th- there might be that option to do so now, but a- again, we would do that in phases on those. And then Heather, if you could advance to eight and nine, we have four park areas that we've identified. And so, again, this would be a transition on those items listed, and then the four park areas uh, listed here as well. And, and so, again, just clarification on that. Uh, we will be doing this in phases as we can identify um, plant sources to put in and uh, funding opportunities. It will be looking at what each of those costs. The Thousand Oaks um, project that was listed in the packet at approximately the uh, fifty-something thousand. That was based on an actual quote. That was several months ago. And so um, we don't know what prices are right now. And so again, we will be looking at that as staff and start looking at uh, uh, full cost for each of these different projects and um, funding sources that would pay for those.
Kendon, um, real quick on this, we had a line item in the budget that was removed. How much for turf replacement? How much was that for?
Robert, do you have that information on how much that was initially?
And I'm not sure why we took it out.
It was a hundred and fifty thousand.
I can answer that question. Since we didn't have direction, what area of the city to, and you can see, one project alone was fifty thousand dollar. That was just uh, approximate budget for phasing up instead of doing entire. For example, the Anzo Park, instead of doing fifteen thousand square feet, we would have tried to reduce portion of it and do gradual. So it's not a sudden look of change. Basically, one of the idea was do primer first, then let the grass die, then do additional work. Since we didn't have exact location and square footage, and we didn't have landscape maintenance. And I gotta admit, Heather is overwhelmed between doing brush clearance and existing programs. We needed additional help. So unfortunately, we did not have clear direction, and the budget was just a placeholder for that amount. But for each project, we can specifically design, see how we can phase it out, that it looks beautiful, but at the same time is not quick, dramatic change. We can come back to council within probably after your July meeting with very specific, we have a palette plan. Tonight, we had clear direction, and we can proceed with that. I hope I answered your question.
You did, and I just would like to move, I mean, I think we need to move as quickly as we can based on the urgency of the situation, but I understand resources and planning. Maybe that grant has some, I don't know, it's just for plants, but maybe there's some some labor in there too.
What we can do is immediately work with Water District on the recoverable funding. And also do quick design and define the phases that we are planning to do through Heather, and we have a landscape architect that we can use some of his hours for this project. And that will be my top priority in our department to bring to council.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robert. And then Heather, if you could go back to the slide, I think it was uh, fifteen with our then on this last bullet point, I proceed with a reduction. So currently, we are uh, irrigating three days a week. And so this would be a proposal in, in all of those areas that use reclaimed water that are city owned. And I specified that with city owned to go to the two days a week um, uh, on that, and just clarification on that. So that, Mayor, those are the three I did, I did want to clarify. I think we're um, staff understands on the HOA and working with them on that color palette. And, and the two days a week on that, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Okay, any other comments from council members? Yes, Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, thank you. If there is support from the rest of the council, I would like to also add that fourth bullet point that the city investigate what it would take to put reclaimed water into those medians that currently have potable water and identify of approximately what it would cost so that we can evaluate those as well.
We will collaborate with Water District. Project has to be initiated by Water District. And uh, I will go back to the old plans that we had. At the time, the idea was to sell the reclaimed water to City of LA and this golf courses on the end, and also I was interested to bring the water to uh, AC Steel School. We will uh, dig out those plans. We will initiate contact with Water District. We ask them to help us to expedite so we can go back to council.
How does that sound, Councilmember Crowe?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands up. So thank you again, Robert, Heather, Kendon, Dave, um, to the HOAs for participating in this discussion. There'll be more to come as we move forward and um, and for everyone that uh, contributed their ideas. I'm very excited. All right, we are almost done with this agenda. Um, we're gonna move down to item number eleven, which is the check register for the period of May twelfth through May twenty-fifth. Are there any questions regarding the register? I am not seeing any. Um, any task force reports? And uh, Councilmember, Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a couple, I attended five uh, SCAG, different SCAG meetings in the past, since our last meeting. Um, and I've, the one good news that we already know, but I'll re, re uh, restated is out of a hundred and ninety-one cities in SCAG district and six counties. Calabasas is one of only thirteen cities to have been approved by HCD for its housing element on the recent re- recent re- arena cycle. So that is a big accomplishment, and we do stand out and they do mention it. So I'm sharing that. Um, also uh, we had a meeting of the uh, communication task force recently uh, with Councilmember Weintraub, myself uh, and our, wh- what will be as, if the election is as it appeared last night, our new uh, Congresswoman uh, and representatives from AT&T, and it was very, very uh, potentially promising. So that was a good thing, and she has been very helpful uh, in for helping us facilitate meetings with different carriers to move things forward for our city. And I just want to say, apologize to my colleagues and staff, but uh, and the public, I did uh, I was driving, I was invited to and did attend uh, the first annual, or inaugural ceremony for the Ninth Annual Summit of Americas this evening. Uh, and it was tremendous. You had leaders from Canada, all to South America, uh, including the President and First Lady and Vice President and leaders of LA, LA and our state as well. So it was a very, very impressive event. Thank you.
Councilmember Crowe.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to uh, let everybody know that on the twenty-sixth of last month, Councilmember Buzajin and I met with the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers. Uh, and we are moving towards uh, finding a pathway to open. Um, I also wanted to mention that on the second of this month, Councilmember Buzajin and I attended the League of California Cities General Membership Meeting. And there was much discussion of, of surveys and uh, other informative areas that we will fill you all in on later.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub.
I'm just letting the public know that Councilmember Crowe and I are participating with staff in monthly economic development meetings. So it's something great that our new community development director is doing and our city manager. So uh, Peter and I will be bringing some information back to the council, but we've been having some really productive meetings on different topics.
Great. Okay, um, I'm not seeing anybody else. So does the city manager have anything to report?
Mayor, I just have a couple of items. Uh, one is i- in light of the recent mass shootings, uh, which are horrific um, and tragic for all those involved. A, a couple of things that we are doing is um, we will be working with the school district, Lost Hill Station, and having some discussions um, a- a- as partners in that to look at things that we can work on together. A- as a city, uh, Debbie Larson has been working with the Lost Hill Station. We had a sergeant and a couple of deputies do a walk-through today and helping us um, look at our facilities and, and really understand those uh, uh, in the event there was a shooting. And tomorrow, we will have two very brief trainings. These aren't a full in-depth or in, in detail trainings, but it's a, it's a refresher from a previous training that was done and then helps us start the discussion. And so we'll have Lost Hills um, Station deputies and then a consultant that will be sharing some information with staff, helping us understand um, uh, what can be done, what we can do in those events, and um, help us create that framework for some uh, additional discussions and, and drills that we might do in the future. So I just wanted to apprise the council of that. Um, and then um, more information to come, but we also are holding a training, a two-day training with staff on our Emergency Operations Center. This is an outside consultant that will come in and work with each of our different sections i- in the Emergency Operations Center um, organizational chart. Uh, and then on the second day, we'll do some uh, tabletop exercises that will look at earthquake, a wildfire, and we've invited uh, Captain C Two and Drew Smith and others to participate in that with staff. And uh, that's at the end of the month in June, and we'll have more information to the council once we um, um, participate in that.
Kendon, I would like to ask you that when the council moves back into in-person uh, meetings in the chamber, that we also get briefed on how to respond in that building, in that meeting setting um, in an active shooting situation.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a good point.
Thank you. All right, um, are there any requests for any future agenda or information items, Councilmember Weintraub? All right, um, are there any requests for any future agenda or information items, Councilmember Weintraub?
I would like to request that we look into the subject that came up regarding. Um, fire, being able to evaluate fire safety, and Matt gave us ideas in terms of when we're looking at. Development applications. Being in a high fire zone and different measures that we could take in evaluating projects with that in mind. I'm not properly articulating it, but we talked about it earlier and Matt knows.
I was thinking, is it the safety element, or is it the update to? Some codes, what was it, Kinden, do you know? But.
If I could jump in, I I think it's, this would be an update to our fire hardening standards in the zoning code. It would dovetail with the safety element, but would be on top.
Okay, and so is that going to go to the Planning Commission first, or?
I think we would workshop it with the Planning Commission, um, and then come back to council once we have a framed recommendation.
How does that sound, Councilmember Weintraub?
Oh, it sounds great. I think we just need a second or.
Yeah, we would need a second though.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands on future agenda items or information, so with that. This meeting will be adjourned, thank you all, and we'll see each other again probably this weekend at the concert. Or next week, the twenty-second, for our regular meeting. That's in two weeks, right? Two weeks? All right, bye-bye.
Thanks all, good night.
Thank you, good night.